Thank you.
Thank you. Lord Provost. Councillor Alexander, sorry, councillor Anderson. President, councillor Black.
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
Present.
Bailey Dawson.
Present.
I've had apologies from councillor El Nakla. Councillor Flynn.
Present.
Councillor Hunter.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Councillor Mills.
Good evening, I'm here.
I've had apologies from Bailey Roberts. Councillor Rowan.
Good evening, I'm here.
Bailey Soares.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short. Councillor Smith.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Tolland.
Hi, I'm here.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Crookshack.
Present.
Councillor Finnegan.
Good evening, present.
Councillor McHugh.
Present.
Councillor McIrvin.
Present.
Councillor Scullen.
Evening, present.
I've had apologies from councillor Shears. Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey McPherson.
A good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman.
Good evening.
Councillor Carr.
Good evening.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
That concludes the report.
Thank you, Arlene. Roger, please. Any question? Is this agreed? Thank you, Roger. Sorry, Bailey McPherson, please go ahead, thank you.
Roger cannot be heard. I actually have a separate point of order, but Roger cannot be heard.
Lord Provost, hopefully I'll be heard by all attendees at the meeting who are not in the chamber. Bailey McPherson, could you please confirm?
We can hear you now, thanks, Roger. Can I now go on to my actual point of order? It's really for the chief executive. Our group have, and it's not for the first time, a concern about the extent of the committee papers tonight. Now, I fully accept we've had a recess. But 504 pages, and that is excluding the city council papers. Plus, if you add in the fact, obviously, we'll have deputations tonight, seems inordinately long. And the fundamental point I would make is frankly, there's nothing next week, there's nothing the following Monday. And I reiterate the point our group has made before to the chief executive, that perhaps having a look at the calendar, and I fully accept the calendar is set for 2025. But I think looking at this in a collegiate manner, when we go forward, looking at future calendars, about trying to spread meetings a little bit better, so we don't have this silly race to try and get through agenda items towards the end of City Governance Committee. And I would certainly appreciate the chief executive's views on this, thank you.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Bailey Dawson?
Thanks, Lord Provost. I put it in the chat, but declaration of interest with regards to item four, I would imagine it'd be the same for councillors Keenan and Lynn as well.
Thank you for that. I'll move on. Roger, please.
Item three, general business, appointment outside bodies, Teesside Valuation Joint Board. It is reported that Deputy Lord Provost Cordell has resigned from the above, and the council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy.
Thank you, Roger. Bailey Dawson, please.
For Teesside Valuation Joint Board, Jimmy Black, please.
Okay, any questions? Take that as agreed, thank you. Roger?
Item B, Dundee City Disability Sports. It is reported that Lord Provost Campbell has resigned from the above, and the council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy.
Thank you, Roger. Bailey Dawson?
Thanks, Lord Provost. We'll revert to committee services as soon as possible.
Okay. Any questions? Take that as agreed. Roger?
Item three, Scotland Excel. It is reported that councillor Anderson has resigned from the above, and the council's instructions are requested with regard to the filling of this vacancy.
Thank you, Roger. Bailey Dawson again, please.
So with regards to Scotland Excel, it becomes short.
Thank you, Bailey Dawson. Any questions? This agreed. Thank you. Roger?
The remaining item of business is confidential. Can this be dealt with in the usual way?
Is this agreed? Any questions? Agreed, thank you.
Welcome to the Climate by Diversity Committee. Let the officers take their seats. And thank you. I believe it's Arlene this evening.
Thanks, convener. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
I see no declarations of interest, so we'll move on to the next. Sorry. Oh, sorry, councillor Crichton.
Thank you, that's noted. Item two, compost certification 2526, and this is for noting.
So this is a report to basically say that we have yet again got our past 100 certification for the compost we produce at Riverside from the green waste collections. We've held this accreditation since 2008, and it allows us to sell the compost to the public. The tonnage is in the region of around 9,000 tonnes per year. And the green waste shredder we got just over a year ago is doing a great job of increasing the quality and the purity of the finished product. Any questions, or are people happy to note this report? Okay, that's us, thank you. The report noted.
That takes us on to item three, Dundee Climate Risk and Vulnerability Update. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
Okay, so the first climate risk and vulnerability assessment for the city was undertaken in 2018. The Dundee Climate Leadership Group then commissioned a natural baseline capital assessment in January 223. And this is now the update of the original climate risk and vulnerability assessment. It basically is stating, identifying the risks and stating the risk to Dundee if temperatures increase by either two degrees or four degrees warming. We know that everything we are doing is now aiming to limit the increase to 1.5 degrees. But what this report points out is that every decision we make from now on needs to take into account the impact of that increasing temperature. The report takes into account and calibrates the costs of recent extreme weather events. And it basically goes through the infrastructure of the city, the green space, the housing, the businesses, and highlights the impact of warmer summers, colder winters, more erratic intense rainfall, and periods of drought and increasing storms and wind. And there are nine adaptation options identified on page 84 of your report. And essentially, we're at the beginning of this process, and the sustainability and climate change team will lead the work on pulling together these adaptation options and start the discussions. Also, in your papers this evening, there is a report on the establishment of Teesside Adapse, which is a regional partnership between Dundee City, Perth and Kinross and Angus. And that is basically explaining the work that we're going to be doing across the region on adaptation and creating a website called Climate Ready Teesside. So the key thing to take away from this is that the climate is changing, it has been changing more rapidly, and it has to be taken into account in all the decisions. Are people happy to note the adaptation options recommended and allow the work to go ahead? Right, councillor Tolland.
Thanks very much. I just have a question. Actually, I think it's a great report, and I think that it kind of gives us a lot of kind of ways forward in how to build a strategy. I just have one question regarding, obviously, in the report it suggests that a lot of our poorer areas will be more vulnerable. But in section five, about building a community's resilience to climate change, there's a lot of information and a lot of kind of strategy. I'm just wondering how we can and how the strategy can prioritise the areas within the poorer areas to build that resilience a little bit more. There's some very good information there, and there's some very good strategies, but I'm just wondering how we kind of build that together. I think another question, if you don't mind, is that would we be getting an update on how far that's kind of moved on, maybe within the next year or so?
Thank you, councillor Tolland. I'll ask Barbara to comment on the specific questions about priority areas.
Thank you, councillor Tolland. We can definitely look at one of the adaptation options, which is around building community resilience plans and ensure that we are prioritising areas of fuel poverty. We can overlay that with the multiple deprivation index and look where we can concentrate our efforts initially to make sure that we prioritise those areas. And secondly, yeah, we will be bringing an update on the CRVA back on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Can't see any other questions. Sophie, no, we will get an update in a year's time about the action that has been initiated and what progress has been made. So I think that's the business. There are a number of tenders on bins and waste management and energy on waste efficiency, but we're going to be dealt with in the next committee, so that's me.
Good evening, and welcome to the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee. Can we have the first item, please, Arlene?
Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Just give us a minute. Councillor Crichton, you've got conventions for item nine?
Thank you, convener. Sorry, I was trigger happy at the last committee. I just wish to declare an interest on item nine. I'll not take part or vote as it refers to my employer.
Thanks very much, councillor Crichton. I don't see any other declarations, so move on then, please, Arlene.
Thank you. Item two, Dundee City Council Variation of Waiting Restrictions Order 2025. You're requested to make the order.
Thanks very much. I think this is very clear. Do we have any questions or comments on this item? Just give that a minute. No, I don't see any questions or anyone looking to speak, so can this be agreed? Thank you, I'll take that as agreement.
Item three, sourcing strategy for the purchase of bins and containers. This is for approval.
So this report is asking the committee to approve the sourcing strategy and delegate authority to the executive director of Neighbourhood Services to award contracts for the purchase of the bins, containers and skips estimated to require during 2025-2026. Costs of £150,000 will be met from allowances for recycling and waste management in 2526, but included in the general services capital plan from 25 to 2030. Are there any comments on this item? Any questions? No? Can this be agreed, please? Take that as agreement, thank you.
That takes us to item four, purchase of equipment, recycling improvement fund, household waste recycling centres, and this is for approval.
Thank you. This report is asking the committee to approve purchase of a mobile wheel packer, and the award of the contract to Bergman Direct Limited, who provide the most economically advantageous tender offer. The cost will be met via the grant provider from Scottish Government Recycling Improvement Fund, plus allowances which include within general services capital plan, again, 2025-2030. Delivery of the mobile wheel packer will be completed by June 2025. Any queries or comments on this one? No? I'll take that as agreement as well, then. Thank you.
Item five, sourcing strategy for various waste management contracts. This is for approval.
So this report is asking the committee to approve the sourcing strategy and delegate authority to the executive director of Neighbourhood Services to award contracts of an active period of four years for the services relating to treatment of mixed scrap metal, mixed recycling, metals, plastics and curtains and paper and cover. With this also asked to know that any contract awards to be made from this Scotland Excel dynamic purchasing system that are not covered by delegation, provided to officers within council standing orders and financial regulations, will be brought back to members for consideration in due course. Bailey McPherson, because you've got amendment, please.
Thanks, convener. Perhaps committee services can circulate it. It will come as no surprise that in terms of consistency, we have always taken the view that the delegated authority should not go past the amount of £200,000, because we feel it is better from the point of view of transparency if larger amounts above £200,000 are brought back to committee for determination. So the amendment simply alters in 21B the figure in the second last line from £500,000 to £200,000. Thank you, convener.
Are you, Bailey McPherson? I can see the amendment on the screen. Can I just confirm that's now been sent around to all members? Yes, yes, it has, thank you. Councillor Crichton, are you speaking, sorry, councillor Duncan, you're seconding this amendment. Do you wish to speak to this?
Only if I'm willing to second, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, councillor Duncan. As you said, Bailey, a position that you've taken before, I think we're all very clear on why, so I'll just be moving straight to the vote on this item, please. Do I have a second there?
Yeah, happy to second that.
Okay, go straight to the vote, please, Arlene.
Thank you. The motion by the convener, seconded by councillor Tolland, is approval of the report. The amendment by Bailey McPherson, seconded by councillor Duncan, is circulated. Convener?
Motion.
Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Councillor Black.
Motion.
Okay, quick pause, just to ensure the microphone's working.
Convener, if it's helpful, we can retake the vote after this matter has been dealt with.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Councillor Mills.
Motion.
Bailey Soares.
Motion.
Councillor Short. Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Deen.
Councillor Crookshack.
Motion.
Councillor Finnegan. Councillor McHugh.
Motion.
Councillor McIrvin.
Motion.
Councillor Scullen. Bailey Wright. Bailey McPherson.
The amendment, I should say, we can't hear half the vote.
Councillor Coleman.
The amendment.
Councillor Crichton.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
So that's 21 for the motion and five for the amendment, so the motion is carried.
Thanks very much, Arlene. A few glitches in the room, but I think that's quite clear, so we'll move on, please, to item six.
Item six, tender received by city development. This is for approval.
So this item seeks approvals except the tender for upgrading amenities at Dalmure Wood's site. Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks. I would first of all say, it wasn't at all clear, if you were not in the room, how the vote went, and I hope that some issues will be rectified for future meetings. My question around Balmure Wood, I've had some correspondence with officers regarding this in the past. And I understand there was a site visit along with Angus council colleagues regarding Balmure Wood. Before we agreed to spending £236,000, being aware of the fact that the previous facilities were subject to some extensive vandalism, can we have some assurances about how future vandalism will be prevented? Because I think we all welcome the upgrade of the site, but I think we do need some assurances regarding that. And I was also really wondering what the outcome of discussions with colleagues at Angus have resulted in, because I think some cooperation with our neighbour, particularly given that the Balmure Wood site is within their boundaries, I think is a very good thing. So I'd be grateful for officers' comments on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bailey McPherson. I don't know if Catherine's able to take this one, or Tony?
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey McPherson, for the question. Yes, I can confirm that we have got a 24/7 availability of a liaison officer for tipsy and travelling people. We are introducing enhanced CCTV to ensure this site is safeguarded in the future. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Tony. Did that answer your question, Bailey McPherson?
Half of it. The other half was about liaison with Angus council, and I was just really wondering what the outcome of the site visit was, and if there'll be cooperation with our neighbour in relation to the use of Balmure Wood, as I say, particularly given that the site, although owned by Dundee City Council, is actually within their boundaries.
Thanks very much, Bailey McPherson. I'll ask Mr Weld to come back and see if he confirmed that or picked up off table with you.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Apologies, yes, we've all been having ongoing dialogue with Angus council.
Okay. Are there any further questions or comments on this item? No? Can we take that as agreement, please? Thank you.
That takes us to item seven, sourcing strategies by city development. This is for approval.
So this item seeks approval for sourcing strategies to commence with the procurement exercise for each work stream. The strategies contained in the report comprise proposed demolition works for financial year 2526 and future Kriegerbahn's primary scope replacement, flat roof coverings, route optimisation software for road maintenance partnership and waste management services, and transfer asset inventory data collection software. Bailey McPherson, I can see you've got a question and an amendment, please.
Yeah, thanks very much. My question is about, it's unrelated to the amendment, I should say. My question is about the information in appendix one, and in particular, the proposed demolition of 82 Drumgeith Road. Now, it's my understanding that this is a, and perhaps officers can just confirm that I'm correct in saying this, that this is a flat roofed property to the immediate south of the New Greenfield Academy. And my question is, why are we demolishing it? As I understand it, it's a semi-detached property. The property on the other half, if you like, is occupied and seems to be in good condition. I assume its owner occupied, but perhaps officers can confirm that. And I'm just really wondering, given the number of people who are on the waiting list, why, or perhaps there have been discussions, perhaps officers can confirm. Had there been any discussions about transferring this to the housing revenue account and perhaps using it? It would perhaps require a degree of upgrading, rather than demolishing it. Could we not just add that to our own housing stock? I'd just be grateful for officers' views on that.
Thank you very much, Bailey McPherson. I'll bring in Mr Martin in the first instance, and then possibly the executive director of housing after that. Mr Martin?
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey McPherson, for the question. I can confirm there had been discussions about the semi-detached properties. And in terms of the condition and the private owners' own wishes and insurance for both properties, this was the most advantageous and effective way of dealing with the after effects of the flooding.
Thank you, Mr Martin. Did that answer your question, Bailey McPherson?
Yeah, I would be grateful for a little bit more information, not off table, and I'm not going to. Yeah, I would be grateful for a little bit more information, not off table, and I'm not going to stand in the way of this tonight. Obviously, I respect officers' professional view, but I'd be grateful for a little bit more information regarding that off table from Mr Martin, if that's okay. Can I just move on to the amendment and I'll not waste the committee's time. Spookily enough, the amendment, if it could be circulated, covers exactly the same issue that we dealt with in item five, that we feel that again, the level should be £200,000 in the interest of transparency rather than £500,000.
Thank you Bailey McPherson, I'll just say it's a consistent stance and I'll bring in councillor Duncan again, just to see if he wants to say anything to that. But maybe just confirm with Mr Martin that when you answer, so you can put that around all elected members, so everyone gets that answer.
Just the formally second convenor.
Okay, thank you councillor Duncan. Mr Martin, can you just share that with all elected members when you answer Bailey McPherson please?
Yeah, confirm I'll be to do so.
We'll just move to vote then please. Alan, actually do I have a second there, just formally first?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you. Move to vote please.
Thanks convenor. The motion by the convenor, seconded by councillor Troland, is approval of the report. The amendment by Bailey McPherson, seconded by councillor Duncan, is circulated. Convenor.
Motion.
Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Councillor Black.
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cardell.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Listen.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Councillor Mills.
Motion please.
Bailey Sors.
Motion.
Councillor Short. Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Troland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Motion.
Councillor Crookshack.
Motion.
Councillor Finnegan.
Motion.
Councillor McHugh.
Motion.
Councillor McIrvin.
Motion.
Councillor Stgullen.
Motion.
Bailey Wright.
Motion.
Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman.
Amendment.
Councillor Crichton.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
So that's twenty one for the motion, five for the amendment, so the motion is carried.
Thanks very much Arlene, can I just confirm Bailey McPherson, that was clear at home this time now?
Could you say that again please? That was.
Can I just confirm that was clear online this time?
Yeah, we didn't get councillor Short's vote, but other than that, everybody could be heard.
Okay, thanks very much. Next item please Arlene.
That takes us to item eight, Brook Street, Broughty Ferry, variation of bus coach bays and West Market Gate, Nethergate, variation of loading only bays, order twenty twenty five. This is for approval.
Thanks very much. This item seeks approval to use a coach parking bay on Brook Street in Broughty Ferry to accommodate and stimulate local economic activity and redesign the parking bays on the Nethergate to loading only to facilitate businesses operating in this vicinity, said. Do you have any questions on this item? Oh councillor Duncan please.
Thanks convenor, just a brief positive comment. I know that the Broughty Ferry traders have been after the provision for coach parties and parking incentive Broughty Ferry for some time to, as the thing says, stimulate local businesses, so just very glad to see this actually coming forward.
Thanks very much councillor Duncan. Councillor Flynn please.
Yeah, thanks convenor, just following on from councillor Duncan's comments. Can I just get some clarity from officers? That this state that the Broughty Ferry Association, Ted Trains Association, requests a provision for coach parking to enable tours. Are we aware that there's going to be any tour company taking place to make sure we can actually facilitate this even quicker if need be?
Mr McNamara?
Thank you for the question. So there are ongoing and regular discussions with the cruise operators to promote Dundee as a visitor attraction to visitors, including Broughty Ferry and its amenities and the facilities now to get there. While what this coach parking bay will be able to provide is closer proximity to the centre of Broughty Ferry rather than the current provision on the periphery. So while there's no plans as a result of this, by providing this facility, it will enable coach operators, should they wish to, coming closer.
Thanks Mr McNamara, does that answer your question councillor Flynn? Yes, thank you. Just in the interest of full transparency, just on a consideration of that item, I wonder if you could just note interest on that for myself, Arlene, given that my family have a business in Broughty Ferry, just for full transparency. Thank you. So next item please.
Item nine, electric vehicle charging infrastructure operation and maintenance concession contract tender report. This is for approval.
So this item seeks approval to award a contract for the operation and maintenance of the council's EV charging asset located in charging pubs and council depots. A second contract for operation, maintenance and expansion of the council's on-street chargers is proposed to be re-tendered due to no compliant tenders having been received to the procurement notice. Bailey Keenan please.
Thanks convenor. Really just wondering whether the price that's offered in page thirty two, if that's the competitive rate with others. You know, I think when we've got a report that was on the previous committee about climate change, we would wish to see people switch to electric vehicles. And at sixty odd pence or sixty, sixty nine pence, even at the fifty odd pence, double the price of a unit of electricity. Now I think they are potentially putting people off, you know, if you were, I would suggest if you're using the ultra charging every time you charge your vehicle, you'd be as well falling up your power. So, you know, I'm not sure that we're doing anything to encourage people to make that change. So I'm wondering if officers were able to make any comment on that to see if there's anything we could do in the future to reduce the cost.
Thanks very much Bailey Keenan. My understanding is that the economics is more that the purchase of the vehicle in the first place, and I think the rate is quite competitive. But I'll bring in Mr McNamara just to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you convenor. So I suppose to start with, to mention the rate of electricity in comparison to petrol, it is slightly more expensive. It's about three pence a mile for electric from a public charger than it is for petrol. However, based on the costs of the vehicle, so leasing costs or ownership costs, it does work out overall still cheaper and a lot of that's to do with the maintenance costs and the supply markets as well. Although these things do fluctuate. The, in terms of external competitors, the market rate in Dundee's around about seventy pence. Again, with Dundee City Council or the private sector competitors, we're both looking at this on a self-sufficient cost basis, which is unsubsidized. There is an argument if we do subsidize the public sector, what it will do is it will detriment investment and growth in the private sector. And again, when you look at the forecast rates of increase in electric vehicles on the road, there is a need for the public sector, so private sector, sorry, to come in and take up more of the future development of this. So we're quite mindful that we don't want to undercut private investment by making it an uncompetitive environment.
Thanks Mr McNamara, does that answer your question Bailey Keenan?
It does answer the question, it obviously does leave the thing wide open to the, why would people invest in electric vehicles? So I've got one myself and can charge it at home, but if I was charging at their rates, I probably wouldn't have bought it to start me.
Yeah, as I say, there is that difference, as you say, between charging at home and charging on the go. And I think obviously the convenience factor and the cheaper factor is to charge at home, but this is more about people that are on the go, I suppose. And as I say, there is that cost to the public purse if it was to drop below a certain level and then that lack of competitiveness and lack of incentive for the private sector to invest, which I think Mr McNamara has covered. Are there any other questions or comments? Councillor Flynn please.
Yeah, thanks convenor. It's a comment with regards to electricity costs. The electricity costs are governed by the UK government. They're tied in, they could do something quite quickly Bailey Keenan, if they actually put their act together and actually made electricity costs cheaper. And I think I would help not just EV charging and encourage people to go green, but also help people in their homes. Can I just make a couple of questions with regards to the report itself though? Can I just ask the officers, this is at no cost to the council, just to be clear, and how this actually would work to ensure that there is no cost to the council if the difficulties arose with the organisation who have won the tender.
Thanks very much councillor Flynn. Mr McNamara?
Thank you convenor. I can confirm it's a concession contract and all costs and risk are on the provider.
Thanks very much. I don't see any further questions or comments, so can this please be agreed? Thank you, take that as agreement. Next item please Arlene.
That takes us on to item ten, community regeneration partnership twenty twenty five, twenty six. You are asked to agree the recommendations.
This report provides an update on the £20 million of funding awarded Dundee City Council by the UK government for the community regeneration partnership. The funding will support various capital projects that have been identified by the UK government and will benefit communities across the city. The report seeks approval to delegate authority to the executive directors of city development and corporate services to deliver the programme. Councillor Coleman, I believe, first please.
Thank you, Mr convenor. This is indeed a welcome report and I thank officers for putting it together. But can I specifically ask about the project on page forty two, about the community facilities grant scheme? If, as the narrative alludes to, this assists the development of new community facilities in curtain, this is really positive, but can officers give the committee some information about the challenge scheme referred to? When, when the full detail will come forward to committee and how such a challenge scheme is envisaged to work?
Thank you councillor Coleman. Mr Hamilton?
Thank you convenor. This is a challenge fund and it's one of three that will be launched hopefully later this week, subject to approval of the report tonight. And it will invite organisations who are wishing to progress capital projects to improve community facilities that are focused particularly on youth diversionary activities within the most deprived parts of Dundee to express their interest in securing grants. And we will assess those along with partners and then distribute those grants in accordance with the with the wishes of UK government, which set forward this, this project as part of the regeneration partnership.
Thank you Mr Hamilton. Does that answer your question councillor Coleman?
Yes, thank you. And indeed, youth diversionary projects are certainly something that the city could do with, so I look forward to seeing the results of that in the end. Thank you.
Thank you, and agreed very much so. Councillor Short please.
Can you hear, oh yes, you can hear me now.
Yes.
You can hear me in the ferry. So first of all, with regards to the report, I'd like to put it on record, my thanks to Mr Hamilton and Mr Martin. I had a large number of questions prior to the committee and they've come back and answered them all, so it's very much appreciated. And my comment really is about the fact that this ultimately does fly in the face of the devolved settlement basically. We're ultimately listening to and being told that this will be happening to our city, but ultimately it's at the behest of a government that is very far away from us. So the stakeholders that have been informed, and I don't believe there's many of us in the political realm that were the stakeholders, I hope they did us proud and what we get will actually fit the city. Obviously, it started with one government and I would have been really, really appalled if we'd lost it with the next government. But as I say, on comment, that's unfortunate that we can't be more in tune with actually coming forward with the things that we also think are correct for the city rather than relying on someone else. But I would never turn down any kind of funding for this wonderful city that we all live in.
Thank you councillor Short. Now I think it's worth making the point that a substantial amount of time, effort and lobbying went in from the council and former councillors in order to secure this funding. And as you say, we're very glad that we've got it and we'll always work with partners to do the best for the city, but it's going to be difficult given the limited nature of control that we have over this funding, but we'll work with the Department for Communities and Housing and Local Government and make sure that we do the best that we can with this funding. Bailey Scott please.
I wanted to ask about the historic buildings renewal fund and how that will be allocated. And it's going to be a grant process where presumably people will apply for that and a decision will be made by officers as to which application will receive that funding. But will the officers be proactive and go out to companies that own properties that are in a poor state of repair? To make them aware of the funding and try and get them to come on board with that. And I'm thinking in particular of two properties in Dundee that it's quite dear to Dundee Public, which is the Customs House and the Old King's Theatre, both in need of some work to them. Will approaches be made to the owners of these properties to make them aware of the fund and to encourage an application from them?
Thanks very much for the question Bailey Scott. My understanding is yes, from engagement I've had with officers, but I'll just ask Mr Hamilton to come in and confirm.
Thank you convenor. I can confirm that is the case. We are aware of the buildings within the city centre that we would like to target and it will be through a challenge fund similar to the community facilities project, but we will be liaising with owners to see if we can stimulate their interest in bringing forward improvement projects.
Thanks very much Mr Hamilton, I presume that answers you. Thank you Bailey Scott. I don't see any other questions, councillor Short's withdrawing your question, so can this be agreed? Thanks very much. Next item please.
Item eleven, economic vision and action plan. This is for approval.
This report provides an overview of recent engagement with the business community in Dundee and seeks approval of the proposed approach to prepare an economic vision and action plan for the city in conjunction with the private sector. Final draft plan will be brought to a future meeting of city governance, I believe, for approval. I believe that councillor Duncan, you've got a question on this item please? A comment and question here.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Yeah, no, thanks convenor. I think, you know, speaking for myself and obviously, I think we all, all of us care about Dundee and I think we'll all be dismayed to see some pretty stark statistics revealed on four point five on page forty eight. The sort of statistics that none of us would wish that Dundee had good way, good way claimed to, as it were. There's a lot of work to do and I do know that officers and others have been trying over the number of years to do their very best to try and turn things around in this city. What my question really is regarding to item C in four point five, where it's mentioned that Dundee's share of private sector jobs is considerably west than, for example, Glasgow, Edinburgh, Aberdeen. Now, obviously, private sector jobs do not, by their very nature, lie within the gift of the council, but I'd appreciate, maybe not for tonight, but you know, maybe even offline, details of what, what can we do, what are we doing to actually try and facilitate and attract private sector jobs to come to Dundee? I'd be interested in some details of that.
No, thanks very much councillor Duncan. I think we all share your concerns over some statistics in there. As you say, this is not something that's happened overnight and it's something that the council has been actively trying to improve for some time. Maybe just pass it with Mr Hamilton, but we could possibly do either a NIMO round to all members or a briefing at some point, just to explain the measures we're taking to look into that we've just raised. Mr Hamilton?
Convenor, I'm happy to provide a briefing to all members of the efforts that we and partners are engaged in.
Thanks very much. Does that answer your question councillor Duncan?
No, that's really positive. I think a briefing would be very welcome indeed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McHugh please.
Thank you convenor. Section four point twelve sets out plans to deliver a Dundee Economic Summit at the Apex Hotel in June. And according to the report, this summit will bring together an influential audience committed to driving economic growth. It's not clear whether our trade union colleagues are to be included in this influential audience, although I'm sure everyone in this chamber will agree that they are key stakeholders in driving economic growth across Dundee and the surrounding region. Can officers confirm whether an invitation has been extended or will be extended to our trade union partners who take part in this summit?
Thank you councillor McHugh. Mr Hamilton?
Convenor, we're working very closely with Dundee and Angus Chamber of Commerce on the arrangements for the summit. Invitations have been issued and trade union colleagues would be most welcome to attend.
Thank you. Does that answer your question councillor McHugh?
Just for clarity, invitations have been issued to trade union colleagues?
I'll double check that. I believe invites are in the process of being issued to different attendees, but Mr Hamilton?
Convenor, the Chamber of Commerce is advertising widely the summit and making sure that people who may wish to attend are able to do so. We're not sending invites to individual organisations, but it's an open invitation to all those who have an interest in Dundee's future economy to attend. And that would include trade unions.
Is that clear? Sorry councillor McHugh, thank you. Bailey McPherson please. Billy, the person, please.
Thanks, Convena. I would say I completely agree with Councillor McHugh's point there. It would also be quite nice, actually, if elected members were invited. And with that in mind, I would just like to ask a question about engagement with the business community. Because the rather grandly called Dundee Business and Economic Council had one meeting in twenty twenty three chaired by the then leader of the council, John Alexander. Elected members outside the administration were not advised anything about that in advance. First, we knew about it, so we read about it in the Courier. But I have spoken to attendees at it, and they were left with the impression that this would be an ongoing council that would meet from time to time. But it hasn't met ever again since. There was something called a forum in twenty twenty four. And there is, as you correctly allude to, there's the Dundee Economic Summit on the eighteenth of June. Now, it strikes me that, well, first of all, I would like some clarity. I've had some engagement with Mr. Hamilton in writing about this, but I'd like some clarity as to is the Dundee Business and Economic Council that met in twenty twenty three actually ever meeting again? And what is the intention, long term, if you're right, into the medium term for consistent engagement rather than one-off type things with the business community in the city?
Thanks very much, Billy, the person. Obviously, there's quite a few things that have changed in intervening time, but once we've taken this plan through to fruition, we'll be revisiting that. And obviously, we'll get the chance for the business community to engage at the Economic Summit as well. Councillor Anderson, please.
Thank you, Convena. I could see that at point four point six, you mention a list to city centre investment and clean growth. And at four point seven, you talk about supporting businesses with the transition to net zero. So I think my question is that when we get to the Economic Summit on the eighteenth of June, which warmly welcome, I hope there will be a focus at that summit on the just transition to net zero and the opportunity for jobs and skills development in Dundee. Dundee's ahead of the curve in terms of thinking about district heating, and we're thinking about retrofitting, you know, our council housing stock. So just to make sure that that has a high profile at the summit.
Thanks very much, Councillor Anderson. Mr. Hamilton, I don't know if you were able to go into more details about the agenda at this time that has been covered by, as you said, the Chamber of Commons.
Convena, I think I'm happy to circulate details of the emerging agenda, but I can confirm that these matters will be covered on the day.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful. I don't see any further questions or comments, so can that be agreed? Thank you. I'll take as agreement. And it's the business of Fair Work, Economic Road and Industrial Committee.
And that's all. Moving on. Thank you. Over to you, Willie, please.
Yes, thank you very much. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
Do we have any declarations? Councillor Dawson, please.
She's on us before making, but just in relation to item five with regards to leisure and culture, probably the same for councillors, Keenan and Lynn as well.
Yeah, thank you. That'll be noted. Thanks. Don't see anyone else. Oops, sorry. Councillor Tolan.
Yeah, thank you. Just firstly, item thirteen, obviously, I'm part of the Dundee fight for fairness and having been involved in some of that as well. That's in terms of the deputation and the item. And the other most substantive element, of course, is that the Dundee University financial crisis, I am employed by the University of Dundee, but also heavily involved in some of the political action that's been involved there. So for that reason, I'll be leaving the room when the deputation and the item is discussed.
Thank you very much. And also myself for item thirteen, the chair, or joint chair, of the Fairness Leadership Panel. Thank you. You, Willie, please.
Yes, thank you very much.
Hello.
Hello.
All right, Councillor Creashank.
I'm part of the Dundee Fairness Leadership Panel as well. Do I need to leave the room?
Don't have to leave the room, no.
That's fair.
I'm not leaving the room either.
And I'll be allowed to speak.
Yeah, thanks, Convena. I can advise the committee the deputations requests have been received in relation to two items on the agenda, the first one being item four, University in Dundee, and the second one being item thirteen, Dundee Fairness Leadership Panel. In relation to the University of Dundee item, there are two deputations. The first one is a joint deputation from Tanista Kustans, who's incoming president of Dundee University Students Association, near accompanied by Dr. Jyedhan Stepanovic, who is a staff member. That's a joint deputation. And the second deputation is Sheila Bailey, on behalf of University Dundee Student Services, and she'll be accompanied by our colleague Deborah Harden. Is the committee minded to hear those deputations?
May I agree to that? Yes, it's an honest. Yes, thank you. Just make the way to the podium, please. Good evening. You have seven minutes. Are you going to be sharing the seven minutes on this one?
We will, yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks. And just hand it over to you. If you stay at the podium when you're finished, then we'll see if there are any questions. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Tornister. I am the incoming president of Dundee University Students Association. Firstly, I want to commend both MSPs and councillors for exhibiting true civic duty and non-partisan spirit in holding our university's management to account. I'm glad that all the group leaders have signed the motion, I believe Fraser has brought. It takes a bit of pressure off me to be very convincing. Both the SFC investigation and the advisory task force headed by Anna Langlands are very welcome. But I do need to correct the record on one thing. The university management does not have a recovery plan. My source for this is the Oxford English Dictionary. Recovery, the process of becoming well again after an injury, illness or injury. And a plan is something you intend to do or achieve. This is actually a demolition plan from a rogue employer. Who do these people think they are to come to our city, propose to destroy our university and then leave, whether to the House of Lords or elsewhere? This is our university. It does not belong to the senior mismanagement. Students have been lied to, kept in the dark, and not consulted about the university's demolition plan. We are still waiting to even hear the word sorry. Just a quick email. I would be happy to draft it for them if they need some help. I want to talk specifically about the issue of the student pantry and the breakfast. The university management did not inform in advance the city's food banks, let alone any of you, of their decision to cut totally the pantry and the breakfast service in January. It costs only about a hundred and forty thousand pounds a year, which is half the principal salary and less than zero point zero five percent of the annual expenditure of the university. Still, they chose to laser target services used primarily by non-white international students as their first, most visible cut. Instead of actually properly funding it, they have now sent out a begging email to alumni who are now funding it by a quarter of its original strength. Tomorrow, the Student Representative Council will discuss a motion calling on the university executive group to forego ten percent of their salary to fully fund these services. The incoming student president has pledged publicly to give ten percent of his salary for this purpose. Now, if I can give up two thousand four hundred pounds, I think that the university executive group can give up a tenth of their one point seven million. And if they don't want to give up their salary, I have an alternative that can use other people's, the money that they have withheld from the striking staff. The university management refuses to use the withheld strike pay to fully fund the pantry, despite that request being put to them by both and strikers. It is the normal custom practice, the strike for withheld pay towards supporting students. Again, tomorrow's students will be politely repeating this request. Though you are quite right, councillors, in keeping the motion broad in operational details, there is a solution on the table that happens. I'm sorry. Microphone? Is that it? All right. Do I get the time back?
Yeah, pause.
We're back? Yep, we're good. Okay. Reason, I want to request a very small amendment to the very last part of your motion. It says, previous levels of food support for students in financial difficulty as soon as it is possible to do so. I would like, I would like to request that this be amended to using the withheld pay from striking staff as both students and strikers have requested. The campus trade unions have proposed a credible and a fair plan to restore Dundee's reputation founded on respect and democracy. I pass on today, Anne, from Dundee University and Colleges Union.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I want to thank the council. Let me first introduce myself. My name is Dr. Ben Stipanovic. I'm a senior lecturer in politics, also one of the officers of the UCU, the treasurer in the local branch. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. Thank you for a support across different parties and for understanding the importance of the university for the local economy and for the society, for the Scottish society and regional society as well. I'll make two short points. And the first one is that in the process of negotiations and recovery, it is important to see that we don't only save the university, but that we have a type of university, which is a genuine university. As a result, as the Latin word universitas says, it's a whole, one, a whole community of scholars and students rather than a Frankenstein that may, if there are two, any cuts aid. In that right, even university was very proud to host the Human Rights Defenders Human Rights Defenders Program, which was funded by the Scottish Government, but there are some indications that because it's not making any additional profit to the city, that might be used in some way. So I hope these sort of decisions are not made. And those who take part in the decision-making process also are impacted. As it is, one thing that the university cannot afford is to compromise on its importance and the importance all that it plays in the city and the society of that and Scotland. I speak as a senior lecturer in politics. If students are not given to a chance to study politics, at least university, the closest university would be UP Eno Stirling. And you can imagine that a lot of our students won't be able to afford us. And the second thing, and it's a very short one, is that unfortunately, there has been a lot of discussions in newspapers and in the public space around funding. And funding is often used as a reason why the Scottish high education doesn't work and especially applied to our university. Can I remind colleagues that that should not be the focus of our discussion? The discussion should be on how the money is spent, how the allocation by the Scottish government is actually spent. And if you look comparatively in similar cases, for example, in the in case of Belgium, Belgian high education, in proportion of the allocation of the money spent on the staff and students is around two thirds. At Dundee University, it's only half. So if all those who wish to, you know, the university, I can be reminded that actually the focus needs to be on how the money is spent and not how it's how it's allocated. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're dead on time. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? I have one first and fourth for myself with regards to the students pantry. Can you maybe give us some idea of how many students are actually using that? Do you have any details? And how many students are actually using a faculty or family as well that have been provided to you?
Well, I mean, from January to March, it was zero because it was closed down. Off the top of my head, I can't give you a, I can't give you an exact figure, but the point is there is some of the most vulnerable who couldn't otherwise get access to hardship funds who were using it. I just said so there are two services, the breakfast and the pantry. The pantry has been partially restored. The breakfast service has not. And we can see there were different demographics using the two. International students particularly using the pantry more widely. The breakfast service was used, but we are talking about substantial figures.
That's fine. Thank you very much. Any else have any questions? Councillor Short, please.
Thank you. And a student experience is more than just the educational, I'm over here.
Oh, sorry.
All right. It's more than just the educational establishment. It's the city that you come to. It's how you feel while you're here, the bond and everything that goes with being a student. Would you still recommend Dundee as a place for people to come and study?
Absolutely, absolutely. People should absolutely come to Dundee, particularly if they want to do community education. It's a fantastic course. My lecture was great. But no, this is the only people I think who shouldn't come are the senior management. They should leave. They should leave. My public position is, I'm sorry, that the principals should, the active principals should go. But apart from that, everybody else is welcome at Dundee, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, thank you very much. I don't see any further questions or comments, so thank you very much. Sheila Bailey, yeah?
Sheila.
Yes, Sheila, if you have seven minutes, and you're finished, can you just stay at the podium and ask any questions from the elected members? Thank you.
So thank you, councillors, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Sheila Bailey, and I'm here with my colleague Deborah Harding. We work at the University of Dundee, and we're proud to work at the University of Dundee. We're also proud members of Dundee University College Union. We are here tonight to represent Student Services Union colleagues to highlight the vital role we have in recruitment, retention and reputation of the university. Our key role in the university's recovery, especially voluntary requirements are lowered as more students will need that support to succeed, and the strategic risks posed by the university executive group plan A. So who are Student Services? We're a collection of specialist professional teams who put students at the heart of everything we do. And so far, we feel that in all of this debacle going on, the financial crisis, we have no voice. We provide dedicated support across many areas of life, including academic skills support, counselling, disability, health, mental health, student funding, careers, English for international students, international advice, student residencies, the Inquiry Centre, first response, student support and wellbeing, the Sports Centre, and as well as our doctoral academy. So why do Student Services matter? We believe that we support students at every stage of their student journey, from entry through study to graduation, by providing our expert advice, skill support and resources, and confidential guidance. We design and deliver academic and language skills programmes that boost confidence and capability, ensuring students can meet their goals. We empower and support students facing personal and academic challenges, and we hold risk. We promote inclusion and fulfil legal duties, such as Disability Equality Act, and supports safeguarding duties. And we can contribute to university policy development as well. We are key to student recruitment. We are key to student recruitment and retention and ensure smooth transition into work or further study. We offer valued services that actually attract students that ultimately stimulate, excuse me, the local economy. We enable international students to flourish, we enrich cultural understanding and hence tolerance. And we support student wellbeing, reducing demand on local healthcare and other support services like third sector services. We empower underrepresented students, care experienced, disabled and so on, promoting fairness and social mobility. However, we are facing the, one of the biggest challenges of, you know, the university under the proposed Plan A, which has not been taken off the table by management. What's being proposed is 632 full-time equivalent job losses and that affects 69% of roles in professional services. That creates around 436 posts, including student services posts. The cuts disproportionately will impact female staff, most student services teams are 75 to 100% female who are rooted in our local community. We've already had an average of 20%, 20% reduction in staff, some areas due to recruitment freeze and non-replacement of roles. Our director of Student Services is leaving post and we've had no communication about that, we just know on the rumour mill. And there's no clear succession plan for leadership. There's been no communication or consultation about our future and we're left feeling exposed with limited opportunity to advocate for the vital work that we do. Cuts in the form as proposed of reshaping and resizing, put student support at risk with fewer or changed shape services, longer wait times and more pressure on staff. We believe that other plans for recovery need to make decisions based on understanding of the specialist, professional and complex work that we do as a collection of services. Our work cannot be replaced by more generic teams. Student Services must be part of the university recovery plan and we are essential to a strong and resilient institution. And there's considerable risk of resizing and reshaping, particularly impacting the whole university. But in terms of Student Services for whom I'm here to speak on behalf of, there's this risk of, serious risk of us failing to meet our legal obligations under the Equality Act. Risks of discrimination, diminished capacity, capacity across specialist teams leading to delayed access. Longer waiting lists, added pressure leading to poorer wellbeing of staff and students. Limited responsiveness to emergency or crisis situations, failure to make reasonable adjustments. Academic staff increasingly depend on Student Services to manage student challenges in the sector. There has been 180% rise in students declaring mental health difficulties in recent years and a 37% rise in disabled students. The proposed cuts would shift complex risks back onto teaching staff who are subjects in specific professionals, not specialist support advisors. And again, it adds pressure on local NHS, third sector and local services, increasing, increasing social and economic costs. Dundee University has a vital economic impact with a student population of near 17,000 students. One in seven people in Dundee is a Dundee University student during term time, the highest student population ratio in Scotland. For every one pound the Scottish government funds the university, it generates ten pound for our economy. Student Services supports significant proportion of the student body and we do so and we contribute to the economic growth. We improve retention, hence help reduce retention costs that turn, that in turn protects university and public funds. We support student success, hence graduation rates. In 2021, our graduates added approximately 420 million to the Scottish economy. We support inclusive growth, for example, statistics show that there's been a rise in disadvantaged and underprivileged students coming into Scottish HE since 2019. Our work helps attract international students. Agents need to have confidence in what we do and Student Services offer that confidence. In 2021, international students contributed 35 million to our local economy. Students, yeah, students overall contributed 88 million. From this deputation, we hope to gain support for Student Services being part of the university's recovery. We ask for inclusion in planning discussions, we ask for quality impact assessments on any changes on the student body. We ask for a clear leadership translate and transition plan. And we ask for transparent, timely communication and recognition of the essential and specialist work that we do. In times of change, student wellbeing and inclusion must remain central to the university's values and strategies. Student Services anchor that commitment. We ask for your support to keep our services on the agenda so that we can continue to support students and staff with the expertise, care and professionalism they deserve. We also invite you to our Student Services Open Day to showcase the work that we do on Friday, the 25th of April, 2025. Two sessions will be running at 10:30 and at 1:30 in the global room on campus. Thank you for your time and I welcome all questions. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for that and thanks for second time. I have a few questions, Councillor Mills, please, you're first.
Hi, thank you for coming tonight and it's really important the job that you do. I just wanted to pick up and ask for a wee bit more detail in regards to if there was reductions, what that would mean for the wider third sector organisations.
Well, it would push things back if Student Services, you know, the university is like a small town. You know, it's got shops, it's got services, it's got welfare services. And without Student Services being there, that would push it back into the community. We know it's already under-resourced, we hold a lot of risk, we see a lot of students with mental health problems from across, across the globe. So without our support, that would be pushed back into the community, especially for our local students. And, you know, that's, you know, leads to other problems in our community.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, thanks for the question. We, Councillor Robbease.
Thanks councillor Flynn, it's a bit of a repetitive question from councillor Mills, but it's, it's also a bit of a comment as well. I'm just trying to understand from everything that you've said about the impact that you have and obviously Student Services does a lot to kind of stop people's lives potentially snowballing out of control in terms of that need, in terms of being able to stay on top of their studies, whether that's someone who's got special adoptions or with someone with English as a second language. So I know it's extremely difficult for you to put a number on things and I suppose what I'm trying to understand is obviously the university is just looking to make cuts everywhere. And I suppose the important thing to remember is it's maybe not as simple as, you know, X gets you Y. If the university wants to have more people coming from abroad, for example, with English as a second language, they need to invest in more student support. Because otherwise, they fail their degrees, you know, they, they drop off and they need actually more interventions, which is more costly for the university. And as my colleague councillor Mill suggested, you know, the, the third sector.
You can talk to that.
No, exactly. And when the language requirements change, lower than students need more support. They're paying a lot of money to be here, this is supposed to be a great experience for them. And certainly my unit, we're there to support them academically. And because they're in small groups, it's easy to pin, you know, to show them where to go if there's something we can't handle. And certainly I know the importance of the food pantry from students and when that was stopped. You know, students have asked me about it and when's it going to come back? So that's a wellbeing which then comes back to the city if they can't access that. And they're spending a lot to be here and we're there to support them and help them academically do their best.
No, thank you very much for that.
Okay, thanks for that. Councillor Anderson, please.
Thank yous. I'm getting a real sense from the way you're talking that you're sort of the invisible glue that holds the university together. And you mentioned earlier that you've had a 20% reduction already. And it's just to get some sense from you about whether you're feeling you're being disproportionately targeted, could range what it was doing in relation to your services.
To, to give us a voice, we feel almost half of professional services jobs in the current plan, Plan E of 632 full-time equivalent will affect Student Services and professional services staff. 69% of that 632, that's what the plan, the plan to go is professional services. So without us, you know, what we worry is, you know, it's fantastic that the panel are coming in, the task force are coming in. But what do people know about Student Services and the function? Often we're seen as a bolt-on service, not seen as what we actually do and the amount of work that we do. And the professionalism and the complexity that it takes and the consequences of not having us. Where that puts, you know, puts students, what, what position that they find themselves in, it would increasingly impact retention. So we need to make sure that we can enhance retention, recruitment, attract students to come, retention and our reputation and Student Services do play a big part in, in doing that.
That's a fair question. Thanks for the reputation, I really appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
I'm in the chamber, appreciate the difficulties of the university at the moment. And we're going to try and do our best as we can, considering our limitations, to actually encourage university to recover in a proper way. Thanks very much for yourselves and the previous speaker as well. Thank you. Just move on to the important, oh, the motion, sorry.
Thanks, thanks convener. On the item, university of Dundee is an item placed on agenda by Bailey McPherson and Councillor Creighton.
Bailey McPherson.
Yeah, thanks, thanks very much convener. And, and perhaps the motion could be circulated. And although the agenda item was placed in my name and that of councillor Creighton, I would like to place on record my thanks to yourself, convener, to Bailey Keenan for meeting me last week to content and for the helpful suggestion coming from your own group convener in relation to one of the bullet points. And I'd also like to place on record my thanks to Bailey Scott, he was unable to meet us last week, but he did helpfully respond with regard to the content of the motion. I'd also like to take, like yourself, the opportunity to thank Sheila, Deborah, Tanista and Dejan for their deputations tonight. Specifically with regard to Tanista's comment regarding the final bullet point. And he was kind enough to circulate to yourself, to Bailey Keenan, Bailey Scott and myself, the suggested tweaking of that bullet point, which would replace the words as soon as it is possible to do so in relation to food support, to using the withheld pay from striking staff as both students and strikers have requested. Now, I did email yourselves earlier and no one appears to have any objection to that. I should say, the UCU and the striking workers have made it very clear, they are happy with that proposal. And therefore I'm suggesting that we do tweak that. Now, Will, if committee services, you know, there's only so far, you can write the shorthand. If they need the actual wording, if they email me afterwards for the minoting purposes, we can, we can take it from there. And I, I, I think we felt, our group certainly felt it was absolutely vital that there was an item at City Governance Committee on the crisis at the University of Dundee, both the financial and indeed jobs crisis. And as the motion alludes to, 632 FDE posts is horrendous. But added to that, the potential impact of well over 700 staff members being affected is completely unacceptable. And I think we have to bear in mind as well that there are, as far as I understand, some 237 unfilled posts at the University of Dundee in addition to that at this time. And as the motion alludes to, I think we're all collectively of the view that all efforts must be made to avoid redundancies and retain jobs at the University of Dundee. And I think we would all agree that we commend the work of the university's trade unions in defending workers' jobs and conditions at the university as the motion alludes to. And yes, we do welcome the independent investigation, we do welcome the strategic advisory task force additionally. But at the end of the day, the vitally important thing is that people's jobs are defended. And it is vitally important, and I'm sure we all agree tonight, that we collectively say that every effort should be made to avoid redundancies and retaining jobs at the university. I would lastly say, just echoing the points made by Sheila and Deborah and their deputation about Student Services Open Day on Friday, I will certainly be attending one of the sessions. I think Student Services provides a vital role within the university. And it's a perfectly reasonable point that Sheila and Deborah make, that Student Services have a voice as matters progress. And I hope we would all agree with that as well. So I'm grateful for the time convener to move this and, and thank you for my, for, for giving me the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Bill McPherson. I think I'll agree with yourselves, I think cross-party is the right way to go. I think it's good to see every single elected member's support that's been put forward tonight. And I think the points you've raised are really quite important. We're cross-party within this chamber, but we're also cross-party across the politicians in Holyrood as well. I attended a town hall meeting, for example, you replaced Willie Rennie, I think that night, Maggie Chapman was there, myself and others. And the work Joe Fitzpatrick's done within the city as well, making sure that the voices are heard, not just here, but also on the panel at Parliament. And I think the highlighting the issues with regards to the full-time equivalents, you're touched upon it there, Bill McPherson, this is the real number is a lot more than that in real terms and that's the real concern. And I think the reputations were quite clear, what we saw there with regards to the impact it would have on the city and the economy, not just in Dundee, but the region. It's vitally important we do as much as we can to make sure the university doesn't just survive, but continues to thrive. And I think that's the important part, no matter what's happened in the past, I think there's got to be a way forward for the university in Dundee. And I welcome the fact that we've actually seen the independent investigation as, as you were and also Bailey Keenan and Bailey, sorry, everyone within the council, sorry. And I think we're actually really all supportive of what's been put forward here. So I think, thanks, thanks for bringing it forward, I think everyone agrees to that. And I don't know if Bailey Keenan or Bailey Scott wants to make a, say any few words.
Yeah, thank you convener for giving me the opportunity. Having, having listened to the deputation tonight, obviously the Student Services deliver a great service to students and the city and give them a lot of that extra support that while they're away from their family, they'll obviously lean on. And, you know, certainly something that no doubt the city couldn't afford to just pick up if the university decided that's a service that they would no longer have. Really important that as many jobs as possible are retained. I'd like to see the 700, you know, even for the point of view, for something that could done with the city's deal, given that it's about making sure that there's jobs there. And I know that may be, well, be difficult because of capital investment, but the, the, the thing being that if, if it isn't resolved fairly quickly, the university gets back to a flourishing organisation. I'm fear that people will stop investing in things like the Wellcome Trust and will see scientists and the like moving out of the city as opposed to staying here and Dundee being at the forefront of innovation moving forward. So it's really bad news for the city. We really need to do whatever we can and lean on as many people as possible to see the university moves forward with a few job losses and, and as quickly as possible, better stability.
That was Bailey Keenan, Bailey Scott, please.
Thanks convener. I'd like to thank Bailey McPherson for bringing forward this motion and for including me in the signatories. I'd also like to commend the deputations we heard tonight. They summed up the issues better than I've actually read anywhere. And they also highlighted the impact it's having on students, which really is perhaps the most important aspect of the whole thing. The university does need to have a sustainable future and financial stability. And it needs more transparency within its, its management and its governance. And I think to achieve that, the, the task force that's been set up really needs to listen to the voices that we heard tonight.
Thanks very much for that. And just for record, I'm on the task force, which the first meetings this week, so we'll make sure that happens. So I'll just take this as agreed by everyone and the amendments that Bailey McPherson touched upon is added to the final bullet point. I think that's agreed. Yep, thank you very much.
People, thank you convener. As indicated, there's also a deputation request from C for item 13, Dundee Fairness Leadership Panel, that request is from Andrew Lorimer, who's co-chair of the Dundee Fairness Leadership Panel, member of Dundee Fighting for Fairness. And his colleague Linda Smith, who's also a member of those organisations and they'd be accompanied by Daniel Donaldson, who's a colleague, is a committee-minded to hear the deputations.
That's agreed, yes, I think that's okay. Andrew, Linda, if you just make your, and Danielle as well, if you wish, just make your way up to the podium. Are you speaking first, Linda? Okay, we'll start with, you've got seven minutes between you and just turn over when you appeal, if you do, okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Linda. I'm here representing the Fairness Leadership Panel. On behalf of the panel, I would like to thank you for sharing a bit of the work we have done over the past two years. It's all, sorry. I also like to thank the three councillors, Mark, Siobhan and Georgia, and the two officers, Greg and Andrea, who are all members of the panel. It has been wonderful getting to work with the five of you so closely during this process. It's amazing how much can be achieved when people of such position of influence can commit to the process and bring in the fullness of the experience and influences under work. I have been a part of this panel for a short amount of time, but I feel like I've already achieved so much. If you had told me a few months ago that I'd be speaking to you all, I wouldn't have believed yous. I feel like I actually have my voice heard on this panel. I don't feel silly, I've judged for sharing what I think about these things and ideas that would make things better. And it's not just my voice. The panel works so hard with the community on all the issues we focused on. Over the past two years, we've had more and more people feeling isolated and their mental health is suffering. We have visited local community projects, struggling to support some of the most vulnerable people in our community and how that affects their capacity to help. We also heard many stories about unfair housing conditions and the tolls it takes on people. To find out more about the mental health and isolation pressure on the third sector projects and housing problems, we spent a year speaking to the community members over more than 20 community projects and more than 10 services relating to these subjects. In our report, you have seen there are so many quotes of real life experiences that we hope people across the council and the city will have a read through. I'll hand you over to Andrew.
Hi, my name's Andrew and I'm one of the co-trails of the panel. As Linda said, we've spent a lot of time listening to the community and welfare services. And therefore we believe that the red medations that we've put into this report are achievable and would create a real, real and meaningful change to the citizens of Dundee. Change is like simplifying and streamlining how people find out, how people find information or including people with lived experience in service design and development and review. I ask to support all of the panels through red medations. And we urge you to take abstinence to red medations, to listen to the voice of your community. We would like the council to push each red mediation forward and, and hold others to account and to see them become a reality. We would also like to see all the red medations embedded into the latest Dundee Fairness and Little Trial poverty absentee line. We would like to see the council report back to communities so that you and your partners are taking their voices seriously and are willing to be accountable for these red medations. We would like that the council, like the council to evidence readily that the red medations are moving forward. We really find, we really value that the council commissioned the work of the Fairness Leadership Panel as a response to poverty and inequality. I've been doing this work since 2017 and it's been a privilege to be, to have a panel like this who continually works with the council to ensure the city is doing all it can to make sure Dundee, to make Dundee a fair set place for its most vulnerable and marginalized. We want to encourage to keep prioritising with lived experience, having a serious voice when resources are being allocated, services are designed and policies being developed. What are we doing here in Dundee is unique to Scotland and we want this type of work to continue to grow. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Andrew. I think Linda's got a dry throat just like I have, but warm. But thanks very much for the deputations. And it's actually a privilege to actually be on the panel with yourselves. So thanks very much for taking me on and welcoming me as you did last year. I see Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks indeed, convener, and very many thanks to both Linda and Andrew for their deputation, which was extremely helpful in going through the, the context of the report before us tonight. I have one particular question for them and it's about one of the priority recommendations on page 268, which I think is actually a very good suggestion. And that is the one under housing C. And that's that the city council create a secure drop off point in Lochie for tenants to leave keys, letters, forms, et cetera. And I was just really wondering if Andrew and Linda, and Andrew or Linda can indicate if they've had a commitment from the council that this will actually happen, because I think since the closure, it's not just people in Lochie. My own board is adjacent and since the closure of the West District Housing Office as a housing office, that has been an issue. And I was just really wondering if they've had feedback from Dundee City Council on that particular proposal.
Question, Billy McPherson. I think I'll pass over Andrew possibly. You want to answer that? And give a bit of background, Andrew, to how many people you possibly spoke to.
I wasn't part of that. I wasn't part of that working trip. So I think Andrea was, so I might want to pass over to Andrea on that one.
You can delegate. It's okay. We'll pass over to Andrew. You want?
Yeah, so there has been discussions with housing around that. So Louise Butcher, head of Housing and Communities, has agreed to that recommendation.
Can I just say, that's, that's very helpful indeed. I think it's a very good proposal. And I would just again like to thank Linda and Andrew for their contribution tonight. Thank you, convener.
Thanks for the question. I think we'll bring in questions when we get to the committee report. Is there any other questions or comments? Oh, Heather, please.
Last year with Jackie Close, who's sitting up there about the toll that this all takes on the volunteers who are doing all the support. And it's been going on a long time and it doesn't seem as if the pressure's lifting. Can you say to us or tell us a bit about how we could better support the volunteers? And you mentioned in the report at page 263 in our papers about burnout. For ourselves. So what would help you to keep going through these tough times?
I think it's just more of what we're doing now, being a part of the community, being a part of it, being in the midst of it. We're seeing this day to days with the groups that we do, food ladders, the community centres. All we could ask is that the council are more supportive and get back to them more. But apart from that, it's, it's what we like doing. We do it for a reason. We're out there in the midst of it because that's what we like to do.
Thanks for the question. Councillor Lynn, please.
Yeah, thanks very much to both of you for, for coming along and talking to us tonight about the work of the Fairness Leadership Panel. I think it's been really helpful and useful. And I think we should, we should be doing more of this, speaking to people who are at the front line of poverty, inequality, mental health difficulties in Dundee. I can assure you that, that you are listening to it because a number of years ago, Hope Point is mentioned in the report. And a number of years ago, what was then the Fairness Commission, a deputation from the Fairness Commission, I think it was called the Mental Health subgroup, came along and made a presentation to the Integration Joint Board, which is kind of like a committee just like this one, except it deals with health and social care. And at the end of that meeting, we asked, you know, what would be the one thing that you would most like to see in Dundee in terms of mental health provision? And what they told us was that we would like to see a, a kind of one stop shop for people to go to, for anyone who's in distress to go to. And we'd like that to be open 24 hours a day. And it took us a few years to get there, but that's now been open for some time. And that would be the direct result of people coming along to one of our meetings, just like you've come tonight and telling us what was important to them and what they felt would really help. So yeah, I just wanted to say that you, you have been listening to tonight and yeah, keep up the good work.
Thanks for the moment. Do you want to make any comments?
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't part of that working trip, but I've been involved since that report came out and been part of the interview panel for the whole, for the number side for that service. And it's, it's been, it was a real privilege to be on, being on the interview panel and actually recruiting all the staff for it. So that's an excellent thing of having lived experience at the forefront of getting staff appointed for that service.
Thanks very much, Andrew. Councillor Short, please.
Thank you, convener. Linda, you might not have believed a number of months ago that you could do this, but you certainly could do it. If you have a look around, there's actually four men missing from the room today. But there's about a third of the people that contribute each committee that are women. So we need more women like yourself to stand up and come and join us at these tables. And from an aside, I noticed on page 268 through fair housing, obviously there's been a change recently with regards to private rented sector and a change in rents, et cetera. And because now rents can go up and down in things and the Scottish government ran a really good campaign with regards to the rights of people within the private rented sector. And I noticed that you've talked about CAB, Dundee Law Shelter and the council. Is that something that you could incorporate as well, making sure that people are aware of what the Scottish government are putting out there as well? Because obviously housing is a devolved issue. So they do have, they do have to make sure we're doing it right as well. And they've got support there to remind people of what's out there to, to help them. Because we have rights in the private rented centre, just like everybody else.
Thanks very much. Any comment?
I think just to answer you on that one, having the information ourselves, as I said, we are the ones that are on the frontline. We are the ones that are giving these people that are coming to us in distress with council offices being shut, not being able to pick up keys because they can't get in contact with someone. But being able to give them the right information and especially people that sign. It takes ages for them to get an appointment. So being able to help them along with that as well and being able to phone to make these appointments for people have helped so much as well. So the more information that we could get, the better it's going to be for the community. And that's what we're here for.
Once again, Linda, appreciate that. And Councillor Black, please.
I was very interested in what you were saying about housing and there's a whole lot. There's a whole lot of stuff I'd like to talk to you about that. But you say that dampened condensation, advice given was unhelpful and some felt the blame was being put on them. Tenants felt they were being blamed for the dampening condensation in their homes. But you also say that that may actually be justified in one or two cases. But what could we do to ensure that tenants understood what was their responsibility? What is the landlord's responsibility? And are the landlords, you mentioned private landlords quite a lot, but also social landlords. Are we doing enough as landlords to ensure that tenants communicate their homes, dry, warm homes?
The thing just to answer that is a lot of people have been saying that when they're contacting council, when we're contacting landlords, they're being told, open your windows, make sure your vents are open. That doesn't work. I know at times you have to have your windows open and stuff for the ventilation, but once you've got mould and damp in your house, it is so hard to get rid of it. And constantly being on the phone to councils or landlords or having workers coming up and doing half the job that they really should have been treating the whole room in the first place. If they did that in the first place, they wouldn't be having this, this trouble that they're having because they're cheating it from start. Whereas they're coming out, they're doing half the job, they're having to come out constantly, they're getting rid of it, it's coming back. If it was actually done and telling people what kind of stuff that they could be doing too. A lot of people don't know what they should be doing. So people coming in and saying to them, open your windows and your vents, that's not giving them the information that they need.
Good. Thanks very much again. I just see on the internet that Councillor Creighton has left it, been noted like my services. That's okay. Councillor McHugh, please.
Thank you. And thank you for your deputation. This was a really good report, very easy to read. I appreciate the use of plain language, an excellent report. And thank you for, even the, the, the bigger size of font makes things a lot easier for people to read. So thank you. My question, and it might be for officers, leads to housing as well. You talk about increasing tenant engagement in service design and development and review. And I understand that the tenant participation strategy is currently under review. And I wonder, perhaps an officer could answer if, if that recommendation and maybe some of the other recommendations under fair housing could be considered as part of the review of the tenant participation strategy.
I think we'll leave that for the officers. When we finish the deputation, we'll go through the report, ask a question then, if that's okay. Councillor Crook, thank you.
Thank you, convener. I just wanted to say that it's been a, a, a privilege and an honour to work alongside the Fairness Leadership Panel in particular and the citizens on the panel. It's been a delight to see them grow in confidence. And I was involved in the first tranche of visiting the, the sector organisations to listen to what the challenges were. And it's been very well noted within the document. And I echo Councillor McHugh's words about it being easy to read in font, but I don't have to put my glasses on. So yeah, well done. Well done to everyone. And of course to Faith and the Community, Jackie Close and the team behind her. Great. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your comments. And I think that's really appreciated, I think, by the gallery as well. I think there's a lot of effort goes into this as well as the, the two, the deputations here this evening. And a lot of the other panel members who couldn't be here this evening as well. I think everybody should get a part in the bar for the work that's been done over the last few years especially and prior to that. I don't see any further comments. Oh, sorry, Ken. Oh, do you?
Yeah, just, I'm sorry I missed your presentation you gave to the Dundee Partnership. I had to leave that meeting. And I'm glad you've managed to come along and give your presentation here tonight. One question that concerned me was how people have felt they've been treated by staff when they've perhaps phoned up to make a complaint. Could you give an idea of the, the numbers of that? No, we'll ask the question of officers and what we've done to address that since, if some lies with us or whether it's most of it lies with other organisations.
I think a lot of the issue has been that there's been lack of communication on both sides. People have been phoning up and asking for, people have phoned back again and no one has. But then they're just leaving it. They're not chasing it up. So being able to say to people like, we've got tenancy groups all over Dundee and they could go and report stuff as well. So if somebody's reporting stuff and then coming to us saying that we've not heard, we could help them chase it up too. And the councillors have been really good to help them with that as well. So I think it's on both sides. It's not just the council too. It's the people that are staying in the houses too, need to be on top of these things as well. And now that the tenancy groups have got the support of the councillors and the councillors have been amazing, having that support is able to help the community as well.
Yeah, thanks very much. And I think it's learning on both sides. I think you probably agree to that. I think it's the feedback again from the panel itself into the working group and it's fed back to the officers. And I think it's not just our officers, but other officers and other organisations. And maybe landlords have to sort of take the brunt as well in much of this, and when it comes to housing especially. And maybe landlords have to sort of take the brunt as well in much of this and when it comes to housing especially. Okay, thanks very much for that. Much appreciated and congratulations on what you've produced here. I think it's really welcomed. Can we just move to the report now, Billy, please?
Yeah, thanks very much. Convena, that then takes you on to substantive item on the agenda and released in the Fairness Leadership Panel Report, which is item thirteen.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll go to Louise first with regards to the question that was raised that Jan Bae touched upon with regards to bullet point three and it was actually being implemented, what's been done about it.
Yeah, so thank you for that. I can confirm that we've been engaging with the Fairness Leadership Panel and Jackie and to look at that solution and implementing that within the Locky Office. So that is in progress.
Thanks very much for that. And Counselor McHugh, do you want to ask your question now? Or are you going to wait?
Yes, I can. The tenant participation strategy is just about to be reviewed and updated. I think it was last, it was created in 2015, so it's just about to be updated. And I think some of the questions under fair housing, the recommendations could profitably be included in that discussion.
Thanks again, Louise.
Yes, so thank you for that, Counselor McHugh. I can confirm that the first stakeholder meeting for the tenant participation strategy is tomorrow. And I know that Jackie is attending on behalf of Dundee Fighting for Fairness.
Bill, can you get a question? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, it's really a follow up to the question I asked in relation to how staff or the perception of staff and how they've been treated. I'm wondering whether proving that or disproving it, officers have checked any phone calls or recorded phone calls to see whether we have got an issue. And I'd like to follow up once we've got an answer to that, we have another question as well.
Yeah, thank you. Andrea, would you be welcome back now?
Yeah, so following some of the feedback that came back from Dundee Fighting for Fairness and through the leadership panel, Jackie Close and myself met with customer services. So we did look at some of that and there was a mix of people maybe not getting a full response or people not knowing how to follow up because maybe they were not given a number and things like that. So customer services have been looking at that to see what they can do to improve it. But also to make sure that the information they've got from the services like housing is the most up to date information to make sure people are then given that information out when queries come in. So there's been a bit of work about that. Separately, we've also been looking at complaints in general and just how, you know, because some of that comes back through complaints in general about attitude and things like that. So we're looking at customer service training and just how we improve that and make sure that the staff feel supported, but also that we give a really good service to customers when they phone in to customer services.
Yeah, what do you get?
The other question is in relation to the, the comment that was made by the deputation that they feel that there's only half a job being getting done. And then in which case then there's a level of repeat work or repeat call out for always something very similar. Do we, are we able to check the information that we've got to see that there's no that level of perhaps poor work or, or no thorough enough to address the issues? So is it, you know, we're going to go back two or three times to address a problem?
And over to you, Louise.
No, thank you for that. And so yes, what I can provide after committee to members is information in respect of right first time that looks to gather the level of repairs, as it says, that were complete, right, first time that didn't require a repeat inspection. But also with a view around customer satisfaction and the measures. So we survey tenants post-repair to understand the level of satisfaction and whether the repair was completed as reported.
Okay, thanks very much. Counselor Short, please.
Just looking for clarification really probably from Andrea. And this Fairness Panel Report is pertaining to all tenures across the city and rather than a focus just on council. So some of the, some of the lived experience could be a home tenant or a Hillcrest tenant, not just purely council or private, is that correct?
I think I was touched upon by Linda as well, so I think I'll bring in Andrea on that one.
Yeah, that's correct. So a lot of the feedback was also about private sector as well as registered social landlords and Dundee City Council.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Tong, please.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. More of a comment, obviously. I'm on the kind of Dundee Fighting for Fairness and part of my role was helping out in the third sector projects. I wish I could have done more. I think that the work that's been done has been amazing. I think though, just as a wee bit of background, what became very clear and that was part of the reason for doing it was that, you know, there was a genuine kind of crisis, I think, amongst the volunteer staff in terms of mental wellbeing. The, the issues that these volunteers deal with are increasingly more complex, increasingly more difficult and actually increasingly more traumatic, I think as well. So for me, it's just a huge kind of thanks to every single person in the city that does volunteer because it's not an easy job. Linda said it's, she thinks it's amazing and there is lots and lots of positives. But it does take its toll sometime and we are becoming increasingly dependent on volunteers to do, I think, what is essential work across the city. So a huge, a huge round of applause to them. And I hope that we can kind of get those recommendations for support and improvement of mental wellbeing amongst our volunteers within the next year or so.
Thank you. And I think that's well presented in many ways because I think the third sector and volunteers are really important within the city. And we should actually commend them more often. So just moving on to the report itself outlines the latest working recommendations from the Dundee Fairness Leadership Panel and seeks support implementing the recommendations. The most recent work of the FLP was focused on three priorities, mental health and isolation, support to the third sector projects and fair housing. And the next steps outlined in the report include presenting it to decision-making bodies, calling for the recommendations to be accepted and including the Dundee Fairness Action Plan for twenty twenty five, twenty six. Monitoring progress at the annual fairness in Dundee conference and seeking opportunities to meet with senior politicians. So the committee is asked to approve the recommendations. I think that's agreed and thank you very much. I think at this point, if it's okay, we'll maybe have a five minute recess. Just need to stretch your legs and use facilities as you wish. So we come back at Thursday, seven o'clock actually. Okay, thank you.
Crack one either way. I'll give them a few more.
Also, I'll win, I'll be back shortly, I guess.
Yes, thanks very much, convenor. It takes you back to the agenda. So, method nine and two then is the minute of the page, so put the pension board, which is for noting.
See any comments noted? Thank you.
Item three is a personal appointment subcommittee, which is also for noting.
Yeah, any questions, comments? Nope, don't see anything here.
Thanks, and we've covered item four. Take you on to item five, East End Community Consultation Reports.
Is that the... what is this? Sorry, I just thought something's wrong with my computer. The apologies. East End Community Consultation, the report presents the results of the consultation on the relocation of services to the new Dungyth Community Campus and makes recommendations on changes implemented, and the committee is asked to agree the report. I see Billy McPherson's amendment and Billy, that's going to be Consul Comyn's, going to be second. So, we'll just hold off for that for the moment, and we'll go straight to Consul McHugh, please.
Thank you. I'd like to preface my remarks on this report by paying tribute to Margaret Hogg and the local management team at Douglas Community Centre for their energy and commitment in defence of the vital local services being delivered in the heart of their community. Margaret is true community champion and an example to all elected members of how to advocate for our constituents. The strength of feeling within Douglas' community was clear from the very first public meeting called by the local management group following the proposal to consult on closure. We ran out of chairs in the centre's largest hall, although there was one chair left empty, that was the one allocated to the SNP councillor for the area. And that strength of feeling was echoed throughout the consultation process. Over eighteen hundred signatures were collected for the petition to save the centre. The consultation findings are clear. Douglas Community Centre is a vital and vibrant community facility, treasured by thousands of regular users, providing a safe and welcoming open door and a range of activities and opportunities to all who choose to enter. In galvanising their community, Margaret and her team invited everybody and their granny to visit the centre. And come they did, including our chief executive and council leader, both expressing surprise at the level of activity and community engagement that is business as usual at Douglas. And so here we are with a huge sigh of relief from those most directly affected, asked to approve the continued operation of Doug, of the centre and the library. And while I have mixed feelings around the closure of the Hub and Whitfield libraries, I congratulate the people of Douglas for making their voices heard so clearly and hope all elective members will join with my constituents in wholeheartedly commending continued support for Douglas Community Centre and Library.
Thanks, Dorothy. I really appreciate that. And I think it's, yes, I was one of the ones that was invited up by Margaret, and I think, thanks, thank to her for inviting the invitation. I thought it was actually a great morning. I'd run, met everybody, had a wee chat and see what was going on in the community centre. And I think it's just a recognition of the consultation process that we've had over the two thousand plus, sorry, responses. And I think it's important that we actually recognise what was going on in the responses. And I think that's a recognition of the process itself. And I'm glad to see that the community centre and library has been maintained. Sorry, it's Billy Scott, please.
Thanks, convenor. I received a huge amount of representation about this issue, loads of emails and visits to my surgery and letters. And the last time I received as many representations as that from, for an issue out with my own ward was when there was consideration for a biomass plant at Dundee Port. So, loads of representations. And I'm really pleased to see that the great work that's been done by the community within Douglas to convince the administration that they should be finding a way to keep the community centre open has really paid off. It's wonderful that people really can make a difference when they're galvanised and have an issue. And I want to do the very best for their areas. My question, so convenor, is in relation to the further review that's to be done in respect of Douglas Sports Centre. Is it your intention to find a way of keeping Douglas Sports Centre open? Because it would be quite a bitter pill to swallow if it were to come back in three months' time and say, well, you know what, after all, we're going to have to close it.
Well, thanks for that. The question, it's quite clear, we're not making any decisions at this particular time. We're going to have to obviously go back and we'll come back with the report that comes from the consultation from that. And the decision on the closure or any closure would be deferred for the viewers that send the report. But I'll bring in Mr Colgan in the first instance, please.
Thank you, convenor, and thanks Bailey Scott for the question. Within the report section six point two point one outlines that we have received expressions of interest, including one from Legend Culture Dundee around potential and community asset transfer. Therefore, the further review will take into account us evaluating these options and then bringing back to elected members with the appropriate recommendations from officers.
Thanks for that, your question. Any idea on the timeline for that?
At this point, Bailey Scott, I don't have any idea of timeline, but once I do, I'm happy to confirm that to all members of city governance.
Thanks very much for that. Consul Anderson, please.
Thank you, convenor. I just want to make the point that a number of SNP councillors were engaged and involved over the last couple of years. And I want to correct any sort of misinterpretation that a decision was made that has been overturned. There was never a decision to close the community centre. There was a consultation on options. And I'm very glad that we're where we are now and we're not closing the community centre.
Well, thank you very much. And you're absolutely correct. It's consultation process and with two ones, both said at the consultation. Consul Rome, please.
Thanks, Consul. And Consul Anderson's very ably said what I was about to say as well. I think it's important that, again, we commend all the work that was done by the community in Douglas, but also again highlight the consultation, that consultation was listened to and acted upon. And I think that's important that that's stressed. Thanks very much.
Okay, thanks very much. I'll come back to you, Billy McPherson, for your amendment, please.
Thanks indeed, convenor. And perhaps committee services could be so kind as to circulate it. Our position is very simple. We agree wholeheartedly with what Consular McHugh had to say with regard to frankly, the ultimately successful but also very intense campaign by the local management group and in particular Margaret, as Dorothy mentions. And we're very pleased at the outcome in relation to Douglas Community Centre. Given that there's a recommendation for deferral in relation to Douglas Sports Centre, we feel that there should also be deferral of the decision at this stage in relation to the Hub Library and Community Facility and Whitfield Library at the Crescent. Consular Rome said a moment ago that consultation was listened to, and certainly in relation to the Douglas Community Centre. I think we can all agree that that is indeed the case. If we look at the consultation responses in relation to the Hub Library and the Whitfield Library, ninety-two percent in the case of the Hub, eighty-six percent in the case of Whitfield Library, all the respondents who use the facility felt that the closure of the facility would negatively impact on them. And given that, it strikes us as only reasonable, particularly given that another deferral is taking place tonight, to have some further discussion with the community regarding some ongoing use of the facilities. It could be a drop-in type arrangement or similar. But also there is other community use, food larder, recycle at the Hub and so on, where there is a need, we feel, for some further discussion before the final decision is taken. We think that's a reasonable approach. If it can be done for Douglas Sports Centre, it can be done for the Hub Library and Community Facility and for Whitfield Library at the Crescent. So, I commend our amendment to committee, and I think Consular Coleman is going to second me. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And Consular Coleman?
Thank you, Mr Gavina. Indeed, I wholly concur with Bailey McPherson's comments. I do think that any decision to close the Hub Library, Community Facility at Whitfield at the Crescent should be given further consideration in light of, in light of the huge percentages of consultation respondents, highlighting that, highlighting that the closure of these facilities would be detrimental to them. I would hope that further review under the leadership of the chief executive should look at how services might be retained at their current locations, which are far better located to serve the communities they are targeted at. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I'm minded to leave the report as it is quite simply because we have a new campus, community campus being built and be completed in the next number of months with the state-of-the-art facilities. And I think the recommendations move into the services within that two objects you're talking about into the actual new campus is the right thing to do. And I don't see any reason why we should defer at this particular time. So, I don't see any other questions or comments. All right, Consul, Bailey Sowers?
Yeah, I'll second you, convenor. I think there's a clear difference between the two facilities mentioned in the Obdem motion and Douglas Sports Centre. The two executives outlined, there have been three expressions of interest in transfer of ownership or, or management of the Douglas Sports Centre. And that's completely different to the situation with the Hub and the Library at the Crescent.
Thank you, Bailey. So, that's Bill Keenan.
Yeah, convenor, I'll be voting with the Lib Dems. I would hope that you would reconsider your position, given that you've just heard from your colleagues that the thing was now about a consultation about closure. It was about listening to people and looking for alternatives. So, you know, be realistic. It was either a closure and Douglas have managed to get you a U-turn on that, or it isn't. So, I'll be voting with the Lib Dems.
As I said, I'm quite content with the report and the recommendations from the officers and where the work has been done in both the, all the facilities and all the locations we're talking about. As Bailey Sowers touched upon, they're slightly different circumstances, but I'm going to put the report forward as it is. I don't see any other comments or questions. We'll just go straight to a vote, please.
Okay, thank you, convenor. So, the motion by convenor second by Bailey Sowers is the report agreed as submitted. Amendment by Bailey McPherson, second by Consular Coleman, is as circulated. Convenor?
Motion.
Consular Anderson?
Motion.
Consular Black?
Motion.
Or Provost Campbell?
Motion.
If you want, Provost Curdell?
Motion.
Bailey Dawson?
Motion.
Consular Hunter?
Motion.
Consular Lynn?
Motion.
Consular Mills?
Motion.
Consular Rome?
Motion.
Bailey Sowers?
Motion.
Consular Short?
The motion, thank you.
Consular Smith?
Motion.
Consular Tolland?
Motion.
Bailey Keenan?
Amendment.
Consular Crookshank?
Amendment.
Consular Finnegan?
Amendment.
Consular McHugh?
Amendment.
Consular McIrvin?
Amendment.
Consular Scullen?
Amendment.
Bailey Wright?
Amendment.
Billy McPherson?
The amendment.
Consular Coleman?
The amendment.
Consular Duncan?
Amendment.
Bailey Scott?
Amendment.
That gives you fourteen for the motion, eleven for the amendment, and the motion's carried.
Thank you. Let's look at that report and move on, please.
Okay, thank you. It takes you on to item six, capital expenditure monitoring report. This is for noting.
Porters latest projections twenty-four, twenty-five expansion total cost as twenty eighth February twenty twenty-five, and it's asked to agree the recommendations. I see Consular Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr Gavina. A question about the parks and open spaces information on page eighty-five. The projected outturn for the old financial year was one point three oh one million, but the budget, but the expenditure at the end of February was just seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Was that projected outturn really achievable?
And the, to the officers, Mr Thompson?
Thank you, convenor, and thank you, Consular Coleman, for the question. I can confirm that the outturns are reviewed monthly with all officers concerned. And we're confident that the outturn is accurate, taking into account any further adjustments that will be required at the financial year end.
So, that's your question, Daniel?
Yes, thank you very much.
Ah, thank you. And I see no other questions or comments. We'll take that. The report is agreed. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Item seven, then before you say revenue monitoring, you ask you the recommendations.
Report presents analysis twenty-four, twenty-five, project overrun, sorry, revenue outrun as of thirty-first of January twenty twenty-five, and impact the council's overall balance as positioned. It's asked to agree the recommendations. Sorry, Billy McPherson, please.
And thanks, convenor. I have a couple of questions regarding the information on page ninety-six at five point two. The first one's the first issue that is raised in relation to overspends. There's a projected overspend in relation to backdated legacy invoices for water services provision on numerous properties. It's quite a substantial amount of money, three hundred and seventy-three thousand pounds. And I'm just really wondering if officers can indicate how that came about, given just the extent of it.
Mr Thompson?
Thank you, convenor, and thank you, Bailey McPherson. And if I can, can I please come back to the after committee with further detail in relation to this item?
Okay, Billy McPherson?
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I'll tell you what my second one is, and I'll save Paul from saying the same thing again, because I suspect he'll, he'll want to do this likewise. Item four on that table is about the recovery of architects' fees. And again, it's quite a substantial amount of, it's about a reduction in chargeable hours. It's quite a substantial amount, three hundred and fifty thousand pounds. And if Paul could perhaps come back to me, and I think for the benefit of the committee, all members of the committee on both items, that would be appreciated, convenor. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's noted. And I think I'll go to every member in the committee. Consular McHugh, please.
I actually also have two questions. I hope that will be permitted. Across all departments, with one notable exception, underspends are projected due to staff vacancies. Sorry, my voice disappeared there. Totalling, totaling in excess of four point two million. Some of these underspends are relatively minor, but there are two outliers. Corporate services and neighbourhood services account for three million of the four point two million total. I would appreciate comment from officers on the significance or otherwise of these underspends, particularly as they relate to these two departments. And any effect this level of vacancies might have on delivery against agreed targets.
Come on, you're second question at the same time?
Yes. Children and families is projecting an overspend in teacher staff costs of two point one million, mainly relating to increased costs of supply cover and acting up allowances. The report I've got quite a loud voice. Probably hear me. The report notes the sickness levels have risen by eight percent since the start of the year, and there has been a fifty percent reduction in recruitment of newly qualified teachers. Can officers provide some additional information on the rise in sickness levels and what action is being taken to address this? And on the reasons for the fifty percent reduction in recruitment, and importantly, the longer term implications of both?
Okay, thank you for the patience and putting your questions together. Paul, can I bring you on on that, please?
Thank you, convenor, and thank you, Consular McHugh, for the question. So, in relation to the first item, members will recall during the course of the fall of the year, and as a, as a result of the projected overspend, officers have been delegated to take actions to address that overspend, inclu- including the holding of posts where they see fit. So, that discretion has been delegated to officers. I can say with regard to the corporate services and vacancies that these items are reviewed regularly through the management team and confirm that we are confident that these posts can be held and with no significant impact on overall outputs.
Children and families.
Yeah, in relation to the children and families items, if I can, I can consult with the director of children and families and come back separately.
Okay. Thank you very much. And there's any other further questions or comments? So, we'll take that report as agreed. Thank you.
If I could, it takes you on to the meeting, common good fund revenue budget report. We ask you proposals. Both right details, common good fund revenue budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, and makes recommendations, the disbursements of funds, and the committee is asked to agree recommendations. Bailey Scott, please.
I want to ask about the festive fund, please, because it's been at fifty thousand pounds since its inception. And I just wondered whether that is sufficient to meet all the grant requests that come in, or whether that needs to be a bit higher. And also, given that costs will have gone up for all those people who apply for the fund since it started, there's currently, I think, the maximum that grant available is eight thousand pounds. And then if you were to apply again for subsequent years, the grant is reduced to five thousand pounds. And I just wonder if there's any scope to increase those maximums. Thank you. Pass over to Paul again, please.
Oh, thank you, convenor, and again, thank you, Bailey Scott, for your question. In respect of the common good fund, and the grants are funded through the interest that is generated from the investments. So, there's no significant increase in the overall amount that's available to disburse to these causes. And as such, there's not a great opportunity to extend the overall amount that's available for the festive fund.
Okay. So, just, has the fifty thousand pounds still been sufficient last year, the year before, to meet all the requests that have come in for funding from that?
I'm not aware that that's the case, but happy to come back and confirm that.
Yeah, thanks for that. And don't see any other questions or comments. We'll take that report as agreed. Will you, Willie, please?
Good thanks. Item nine then is treasury policy statement. Your report, this is for your approval.
Again, committee is just asked to agree to prove the council's treasury policy statement. Questions or comments? We'll see if that one's agreed. Thank you.
Item ten then, before you say management strategy, you ask you the recommendations.
Again, committee is asked to note and agree the recommendations. Yeah, no questions or comments. We'll take that one as agreed as well. Thank you.
Item eleven then is mainstreaming equalities report. This is for approval.
He's asked to agree the recommendations of this report. Bailey Keenan?
Yeah, I just got a question for officers. I know that there's an equal pay claim, and, and I was quite surprised that the gender pay gap that the officers have went through and identified within the report. So, really wondering for a, about an update on where the, the equal pay claim is in relation to the negotiations with trade unions. And, and if, as to whether, whilst compiling the report, we've identified any other areas where there's likely to be an imbalance of pay that's made between the genders.
Thank you for the question. Mr Many, please.
Thank you, convenor. In answer to Bailey Keenan's questions, the equal pay claims continue, and it will keep group leaders advised as to progress on all of those claims. At the moment, there are no other issues that I am aware of that I've not previously briefed group readers on.
Also, thank our head of peoples online, maybe Lindsay. Would you like to make a comment?
Hi there. Thank you, convenor. Yes, just to give reassurance around
Hi there. Thank you, Kavina. Yes, just to give reassurance around the report and what we've identified around the median and mean gaps there. In terms of what we are seeing, we will be bringing forward as part of one of the outcomes you'll see in their leadership development programme and alongside that, measures to make sure we engage with protected groups and understand any barriers that might be there in terms of them having access to that that group. So that should also help tackle any occupational segregation, which is also mentioned within the report.
Thank you, Lindsay. Okay, yeah, thank you. Councillor Tolland, please.
Thank you. I think it's a really good report and it's got lots of, I think, really important strategies moving forward. And I do have a question about how we integrate the stats on violence, hate crime and so forth into these strategies. And just thinking of one example, looking at the housing services, for instance, one of the discussions I've been having with the Dundee International Women's Centre recently is questions like, is there a rise in hate crime in housing? Is there a rise in antisocial behaviour against some of our kind of new Scot population? So, and I know that these areas are researched in other sections and other parts of the committees, but I just wondered if there's any plan to try and integrate those stats so areas like housing and so forth can get a better sense of maybe what's going on there, because obviously we have a rise of the extreme right and with that is worrying, like could perhaps become a rise in hate crimes and violence as well. So I wondered if it's something that could be monitored within that process.
Thank you. Andrea, would you like to add?
Yeah. So as part of the mainstream inequalities report, I suppose the key part of it is how we mainstream inequalities work within the individual services. So what we've tried to do in this report is not to try and pull every action into another action plan because there will be work going on in individual services. Obviously, around data, we're trying to make data available across the council for each service. And some of that will be the wider census data that we'll release and other things like that. I'm not sure if housing would also be looking at information that would be coming from community safety, because there is still the community safety partnership that looks at that side of it through hate crime and antisocial behaviour. So we would obviously work with them and the Equality Steering Group takes that overall view across the council. They look together at how, what actions can be done together between different services. So I would say that we do try and do that, but we're not trying to pull this into become a huge massive action plan that sits separately to what we need to be doing in the services. I hope that helps.
That's a question. Okay, thanks very much. Councillor Short, please.
Just a comment with regards to how we sit as a city, just reading the statistics on page one, seven, one, just how diverse we are. And within that diversity, obviously, we have a workforce. And we heard quite lightly earlier about the fact that the third sector worked very hard with communities across the city, but so do the workforce at Dundee City Council. And they should be able to do so without fear or favour of the wider community using them or any of their protected characteristics against them. So I'm really pleased to see that we have to lead this as a city. And if we do see it, we should call it out because it's not right. We should all be living in an inclusive society. And today, this is a very positive picture about how inclusive Dundee is, but we can't allow ever any of those good Dundonian traits to fall back because at the end of the day, this is a welcoming city and we need to continue to be that. And as a city councillor, I'm very pleased that we're at the forefront of that. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Much appreciated. And I think that's no further questions or comments. So we'll tell that the report is agreed. Thank you.
Take you on to item twelve, revised performance management framework. You'd ask you the proposals.
This report presents the revised performance management framework for twenty-five to twenty-eight. It recommends that the committee agree to the revised framework and remit the council leadership team to launch and deploy it across council services and the committee has asked to agree the recommendations. And no comments or questions. So we'll take that as agreed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And item thirteen has been covered. It takes you on to item fourteen, supporting low-income families through food larders and cafes. This is for approval.
Okay, the report updates members on measures to assist low-income families through an updated approach to funding of council-owned properties and members are asked to be recommendations. Councillor Mills, please.
Yeah, it's just really to welcome this report. I think it's great that we're acknowledging the hard work that the food banks do. And I see here especially that we've got the Locky Larder and the Larder and Staff Martin. But I think, as has been pointed out tonight, these institutions are run wholly by volunteers. And I think what's happening with the UK government and these carless crew disability cuts, these food banks will become probably more essential. So, yeah, it's really just to welcome this report. And, yeah, thank you.
No, thanks for your words. And I think you're absolutely right. I think when you start looking at policies being made elsewhere and the impact that has on the city and its residents, it's quite concerning. So thank you. See no other comments or, and we must as agreed. Thank you.
Okay, take you on to item fifteen, attainment and progress tracking software.
Again, just for quick straightforward comments or questions? Nope, that is agreed as well. Thank you.
And the remaining items are confidential and the committee wish to deal with these in the usual way.
Are you content? Yep, I think that's agreed. Thank you very much. And thank you for the evening. Thank you. Business closed.